Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, January 12th, 2016. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ted, if you would, read the roll, please.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Landware?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And we start our meeting off tonight with one of the things that we always really enjoy, the newly-named Highlander Highlights, and tonight, we are going to honor the Strikers, our adaptive soccer team, for their appearance in the state tournament. If I could, I just want to take just a second and read what was actually posted on our website. The Strikers Adaptive Soccer Team made up of players from Columbia Heights and St. Anthony, played three games November 20th and 21st at the 2015 State Tournament. The team won one and completed the season as the sixth-best team in the state. Goalie Tyler Krasinski pictured in this pitcher here, Tyler, I see you, pictured out there as well, was named to the All-Tournament Team. This was the first state tournament for the co-op Strikers in the four years since they formed, so we'll start off with an early congratulations, and then we want to take a moment to make sure we recognize each of you individually that are here tonight, but I wanted to give the coach an opportunity to speak if she'd like to. You don't have to, just talk about your season.
(laughing)
Okay. Okay, well, then, we'll just keep moving forward. I think what we'll do, we have certificates for each of the kids, so what I'd like to do when I call your name, have you come up, have your pitcher taken, have an opportunity to be congratulated by the other board members, and when you get ready to leave tonight, and not that you're running out into the cold in any kind of a hurry, but Casey would like to get a group pitcher, if, out in the hallway, so if you can make sure that that takes place when we're done, that would be great, okay? We're gonna start with Katie Dixon. One up Katie. Congratulations on your pitch, and I'm sure that we...
Good job!
I'm 100% sure if these guys are related, but Natalie Dixon. Mark Hanson. Remember, these kids are used to running all over the floor, a few extra steps go down the slide. Tyler Krasinski, one up.
Ghost, ghost siblings!
And Coach Megan Nelson, come on up.
Are you Brian, Coach Denzer?
And before you guys speak out, give us a chance to sit back down. I know there was a couple other board members that had an opportunity to come and watch you at the state, and they may have something that they want to share with you as well, so give us just a second to get settled back in and work.
Go ahead, please.
You guys are setting good examples, you're great student athletes. Keep it up and we'll go again next year, okay? Thank you.
And I just want to say, it was, it was an honor to be at your game, and to see how hard you, you worked, you never gave up, and that's just so much, so admirable, and people should look up to you for that, and it's a great achievement that you've made here, so be proud of yourselves.
Anything you want to add?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to see the game, and I missed so much, so, good job, next year, next year.
I had an opportunity to watch the first game on Saturday, unfortunately, after what I heard took place on Friday evening, I so wish I would have made that game also. I think Ted, you made the Friday game, and I know Molly, you would have been there.
I was there.
Okay, and Superintendent was there, too. My understanding is that not only did you have huge fan support, but you guys rose to the occasion, and as Molly said, phenomenal student athletes, so we're very proud of you, that's one of the reasons we wanted you guys to come here tonight, so congratulations, and no pressure, but we'll be looking for you in the state tournament again next year, so congratulations, guys.
Can I say one more thing?
As Superintendent, I just want to say that I enjoyed the games, I enjoy that the coaches and the team work together to celebrate Heights' pride, and we don't often get to state around here, and so this is like something that goes up on the wall, and we go, remember when we did this, so I say thank you for that, and until next year. Go team!
Good job.
Josh, can I say something? Do I have to approach the thing?
What? Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, girls.
No, I just wanted to say thank you to the school district for really supporting this team, the idea of, that when you have children with special needs, a lot of times you grieve more than I think people realize, and I never thought my children would let in a sport, I never thought my children would go to state, I never thought my children would even get to participate in sports, and so for us, for our family, and for all these wonderful children out here, I think you can see, you, you've unleashed a lot of their potential, and I, I think that, I'm, I'm just really appreciative of our school district for the huge, massive amounts of bus participants that showed up and really supported the team, I think, was really heartwarming to all of us parents that, that quite often, in our situation, don't get to experience this, and I think that we need to really say thank you to the high school, to the superintendent, to, to all the people behind the scenes as well, to our wonderful coaches, which we love dearly, to my children who I'm gonna embarrass to death, and all the rest of you guys, I'm gonna embarrass you too, anyways, so, but I just really want to say thank you, because it really, it meant a lot to all of us on, on the team, and all of our, all of us parents, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ken, I'm gonna do you guys a huge favor, unless you have a burning desire to sit through a school board meeting, this would be an excellent opportunity to go out and get your pitcher taken with Casey, so, it's up to you guys, but thanks for coming tonight, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just, you got, guys, just to echo what Becky had mentioned, I think, the, a, a big thank you to, to the community, I mean, and I, my understanding is that Friday night's game was phenomenal as far as fan support, but, yeah, there was no shortage of fans on Saturday either, so, it was really nice to see them, everybody stayed with them, so thank you to everybody that was actually a part of supporting the team, greatly appreciate it. Moving on, general, agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, next up would be the approval of the agenda, could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura, discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. The announcements, January 18th, Monday, there'll be no school, it's Martin Luther King Birthday, that is the district in-service day. January 19th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM will be a school board listening session. Also on January 19th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM will be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. January 25th, Monday, no school, it's a grading day. January 26th is a Tuesday, will be an election day for special election A, and on January 28th, Thursday at 6:00 PM, there'll be a canvassing meeting for special election A, again here in the community room. Correspondence, Superintendent?
Mr. Chair and members, there is no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next up is communication to the board, citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board, the board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, which covers the minutes of the December 8th school board meeting, and the December 3rd and 15th special call board meetings, could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Molly, thank you, discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Abstain.
Motion carries. Next is discussion reports and information items, reports from members of the board. Board members will report on activities since the last regularly-scheduled meeting. Molly, would you like to start?
Yes, I, let's see here, I attended the organizational meeting, I had an opportunity to meet with Superintendent Kelly, thank you for your time, it was a great meeting, also had an opportunity to meet with Chair Larkin and Member Landware, looking forward to meeting soon with Member Palmer, and attended several of the junior varsity and varsity boys basketball games, had an opportunity this morning to go to the Rise Up Breakfast at Columbia Academy, which was really, a lot of credit to Mr. Burcus and his staff for putting that on, they're doing a great job of recognizing the, the good things going on at the academy. Also attended the organizational meeting last week, and that's it, thank you.
Thanks, Ted?
I also attended the organizational meeting last week, and then, had, was able to speak with Member Palmer and Member Lewis, thank you for your time, I enjoyed that. I did, you know, focus, I did learn, learn that instead of focusing last week on leadership and experience in making our decisions, seemed to me we were too focused on what happened back in September with former member Nichols, regrettably for our community, instead of focusing on the skills we should have been focusing on, we were looking at the past, and, so hopefully we can move past that and move, continue to move forward in the future. Also attended the Value View PTO meeting, wonderful meeting, and great turnout with many, many parents there. Thank you so much, Value View PTO, for having me, and I look forward to being able to attend more of your meetings this year, and if you, if you're not involved in the PTO at Value View, and you're a parent or tied to Value View, please, I strongly recommend that you attend, and there's a lot of enthusiasm there, and a lot of support, I believe they were able to give $4,000 to Value View to help purchase some laminators and computers, so what a great, what a great donation and great effort to support Value View. Also attended the Columbia Academy Robotics Meet this Saturday, and man, talk about a crowd, there was, I think the bleachers were completely full, and everybody seemed to be really engaged and really into the, the competition, so lots of different teams, I don't know how Columbia Heights did, but I know we had four teams there, and was very, very proud of, of Columbia Heights' representation there at the meet. Also attended the, the chamber meeting, we're having a legislative focus coming up, and soon to talk about education and workforce with our area legislators, so I look forward to doing that, and help, unfortunately, many of our legislators don't get together and, and discuss, and so hopefully the chamber is hoping to put them, bring them together to discuss business and workforce development, so that they can get on the same page and, and represent as well in this area. And then I'm looking forward to the MSBA Conference coming up Thursday, Minnesota School Board Association coming up Thursday and Friday, and I hope we can all get together and perhaps talk about what sessions we should go to, and so we don't duplicate sessions, and spread ourselves out, and that's it, thank you.
Laura?
Well, I also attended the organizational meeting last week, I had several conversations with fellow board members, and, and thank you, Director Hollaby, for your conversation about something else that I was able to attend this yesterday, it was a discussion that District 287, which is a special education intermediate district, they hosted with District 916 and District 917 with regards to a lot of what you've been seeing in the news lately with students with some extraordinary needs and, and behaviors that, that either place themselves or others in their, in a classroom setting in danger, and some of the solutions that perhaps, that need to be done, and probably more at the legislative level. So there were, there were several representatives from the, both the state and the state house and senate, and then there were also representatives from the, some federal offices as well, so there does seem to be some interest in perhaps sponsoring some sort of a legislation to be able to give the, the districts more training for their staff to be able to meet these needs, to be able to, hopefully be able to reduce injuries, and keep kids in school, and kids learning, and, you know, move forward with that, so, quite an interesting, interesting subject, and I, I thoroughly encourage everyone to, to get some background on how incredibly complex this situation is, there really is no easy fix, and I think that was the conclusion everybody came to, so more heads together, coming up with solutions would be, would be most hopeful, and I think that's pretty much it for me, although I think there was a choir concert in there somewhere back at the end of December that I, I don't know if we ever reported out on, so, yeah, the academy, the academy did have a choir concert, and I don't think we ever reported out on that, and I think almost everybody was there, so, Rex?
Yeah, I didn't make that.
You weren't there?
No, not the...
You weren't there? I could have sworn I saw you there.
I was at the high school band and choir, but not the, I didn't, not Columbia Academy.
Okay, anyway, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. I think our last regular meeting was December 8th, right? Does that sound right? So, and we had a special meeting, we had, it was a special call meeting for the WMEP thing, and, I mean, everybody was at that meeting, so, but attended that meeting. I was fortunate enough to attend the two-day ties conference, we've talked about it kind of briefly back and forth, but certainly, some amazing things are taking place in the, the world of technology. I had the opportunity to attend AMSD last Friday, I think you had all, Superintendent Kelly put information in your updates on that. I have had conversations with Member Lewis, Member Palmer, Superintendent Kelly, I also was at the organizational meeting, I attended the chair meeting, I was at the robotics too later on, towards the end, I was kind of peeking back at Casey to see if he knew, but they were, they had a first, and at that point, they were going into the finals, and they had a first place, a second place.
First, third, fourth, and 17th.
First, third, fourth, and 17th, so, yeah, it was pretty amazing, and if it continues to grow, as you said, I mean, just the, the number of people, I don't know what the options are for a change of venue, but it was, it was packed from one end to the other with people, I mean, it was, I mean, people were on the floors and in the bleachers, and, so they did a nice job, and I think it was Mr. Kennedy that kind of set set up, did a phenomenal job with running that whole thing, it was really, really well-run as well, and so, was impressed with that. And again, just touching on the organizational meeting, I would like to think that we did actually lean towards recognizing leadership, and I appreciate the members of the board that nominated and elected me to the chair, their vote of confidence, and my goal is to do the best job that I can, hopefully following suit with my leadership from last year, so, other than that, MSBA, I don't know if, it's just Ted and I, you and I are the only ones going this year, so, that's for us, are you going?
I'm going, oh, absolutely.
Okay, I saw something that was just Ted and...
Did you register? I was gonna say, we're always registered, all of us are always registered. Oh, I was gonna say, they, they said that they automatically enroll those, the last time I was there, the only thing is, is the lunch, but that's okay, I can skip a lunch, it's not like I haven't done it before. She'll get you enrolled.
Okay, now there's three of us going, okay. Moving on to the Superintendent's report.
Mr. Chair and members, the E-12 Administrative Team continues to meet to discuss and explore strategies to strengthen and support American Indian education, and to better understand the background and upcoming changes to the integration rule and the practices therein, those are gonna be the focuses of a lot of our meetings between now and, and May, at the admin level. I did attend the AMSD Board of Directors meeting with Chair Larkin, it was an interesting meeting, the, I did give you all the materials in the, in the packet, there was a big presentation from Minskew on concurrent enrollment, PSEO, continuing college and career already options, and also about qualifying teachers to teach those classes. There appears to be a waiver that's going to be extended, so that we will have a wider window to get our K-12 teachers ready to teach those classes, and so that is a, a stroke of good luck for us, because one was looking at 2018, it, that looked awfully close, I think they're talking about 2022 at this point in time, so we'll just have to see how that comes down, I'm glad they came out and said a little bit about that. I co-facilitated last week a WMEP Superintendent Advisory Meeting, focused on the mission and the purpose, and the service model of WMEP, what it is now and what it could be in the future. There will be a continuing of that, that meeting in February, with people coming together for, the superintendents coming together with some recommendations on what might be done with WMEP 2.0 or possibly even 3.0. Director Holmgren and Bennett, and I have been meeting, and will be getting back to you on 2016, 17 budget assumptions and staffing parameters. I also attended the school board organizational meeting, and I had, on the chair meeting prior to this meeting, and I had multiple meetings with school board members, so I want to thank each and every one of you for your time. I have one thing to, to tell you, and that the Subcommittee on School Board Policy is not meeting this month because MSBA does not have the policies ready to us, they have not given us the legislative updates, Dawn religiously calls about once a week, and I think they're getting a little tired of us down there, but they said that they will get them out soon, it was gonna be December, and then it was January, I think we're gonna probably look at February. I want you to let you know that the one policy that we are working on is the water safety, and we have that in draft form to present to the committee just as soon as we have enough work for the committee to be pulled together to do, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, information item, high school fire alarm bids, the board will present with information on the bid for the high school fire alarms. Director Holmgren?
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Back in December, actually December 10th, we collected bids on the, on the new fire alarm system for the high school, so this is actually the first meeting that I can actually bring it back to, because we haven't had many meetings, but you can see in your packet, from Hallbrook Engineering is the one who put the specs together for the program, and they are recommending, we take the low bid and take ECSI, you can see that that's at 166,000, where the next, next bid is quite a bit higher, so we feel very good about where that came in, and we're certainly gonna be saving our taxpayers some money. So, next meeting, next week, I'll bring this back to take action, and we'll, we'll then sign the contracts.
Questions for Bill?
I, I actually do have one, I mean, that's like $70,000 difference between the low bid and the second lowest bid, that's pretty significant, were there any, were, were exactly the same products, I mean...
Yeah, what, what happens in, in bidding, especially with school districts, companies that have enough work, they'll come to a, a bid like this and give a high price, just in case they might get it, make some extra money, so that's what's happened here, so we, we did go back and talk with ESI, just to make sure that, you know, something wasn't missed in the spec that they weren't seeing, but everybody's very comfortable that everything's being covered, and that's the price that we have.
And they have a, I imagine a long history of being able to, I mean, this is a safety item, so I'm always a little bit more apprehensive about approving a low bid on a safety item.
Yes, this is, this is, this is not a new company by any means, they've been around for a while, and they've done a lot of work in this area, so we're very comfortable with using that company.
And competitively priced. Thank you.
Is this something that we just need to do every so often, replace the firearms?
Yeah, and actually, this gets listed when the, when we have our, the fire, the state fire marshal comes into our buildings every three years, and this was put on his list to have done, so that's why we're doing it, we don't just do it because we think we should do it, it's something that we have to do by state fire marshal.
They're telling you to replace the system?
Yeah.
Is that, and that's what we're, okay?
Yeah.
How old is the system that we have?
Well, I couldn't tell you for sure, I think it was early 90s last time.
There's different pieces to it, I think, because there's stuff that was existing, and then when the Jim and stuff got built, and so it's...
Yeah, it is different, because like, when we went, came, when we came in and put the sprinkler system in, you know, a lot of the smoke detectors became obsolete, we took those out, so, it's actually a smaller system, and it was way back in the 80s, so to speak, but it's getting old, it is time to replace it.
I would imagine there's probably advancements since then, but...
Yeah, well, yeah, I imagine that too, I guess, I don't know the components inside those smoke detectors, or, but like I say, what, the reason what we're going along with this project is, is mandated by the state fire marshal.
I see here it's funded by Health and Safety Dollars as well.
That is also correct, yes.
Any other questions or comments for Bill? Any other questions or comments for Bill? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is the American Indian Education Resolution. Nicole.
Thank you, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's my pleasure to bring, um, information to you about, um, the resolution that's required by Minnesota Statute 124D point 78. Uh, annually, the School Board has to, um, so next board meeting, I will come and have to take action, um, to meet the Minnesota statute that we are meeting the needs of American Indian students. The parent committee, um, which in our case is a consortium between Columbia Heights, Fridley and Springling Park, um, have met and have concurred that Columbia Heights Public Schools is meeting the needs of our American Indian students.
This is an annual?
Correct.
Event? Okay. Any questions for Nicole?
Yeah. Oh, I, I was wondering, um, how many members are on the committee?
Uh, there are 12 members on the committee.
Okay, so that there's, it looks like nine.
One is a teacher, which happens to be our own Coleman Nimroff. Um, one is a student and, um, the rest are parents.
Yeah, so there, there's nine out of, well, I, oh, so there's 12 members?
Twelve total.
Twelve total, okay. Okay, so that, it looks like a short list, so it looks like.
Not all were at the meeting.
Right, okay. I, I understand that. I, I just wanted to make sure that there weren't like 15 people on the committee and only nine signed it.
No, there's 12 total.
Okay, thank you.
Is this all that's required then? Is that the committee affirms that we are meeting this, the standards?
Correct, based on that statute.
Okay.
Would you be able to explain the standards?
The, the curriculum standards?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we had, um, an information meeting for our parents as well as we gave a copy to the families, um, in the consortium of the three districts, um, talking about the American Indian standards in the curriculum, as well as Director Mahon is, um, putting a page that we're just finishing on American Indian link on our website that will show the state standards and how Columbia Heights is using them. So, families can go to the webpage and see that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Next up is math curriculum recommendations. Xena.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Uh, we are here this evening to provide an update on, um, the math curriculum process. So I'm pleased that Coordinator Tuckrell is joining me this evening to help discuss, um, the process that we've gone over, um, this school year and last school year, um, in alignment with the curriculum cycle for the district. So Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner. Um, and this evening, our presentation will focus on community excellence and innovation. So I'm gonna turn it over to Coordinator Tuckrell to, um, discuss the curriculum review cycle.
As Xena had mentioned earlier, we're following the Columbia Heights curriculum cycle as we go through the math, K-5 right now, math. And we're currently in year two of math, which includes analyzing the standards, selecting instructional materials, and sharing our plan and selected materials with the world's best workforce and School Board. As we look at the curriculum process, we include all teams in our district. So we're including our teachers, our leadership teams. We have a K-5 leadership team, which includes a representative from each grade level in every elementary school. We also include our admin team, which includes our deans and our assistant principals and principals. And throughout this process, we've included members from our world's best workforce as well as sharing with the world's best workforce where we're at. So we're currently bringing our recommendations to the superintendent and School Board. And here's the more detailed outline of our process that we've been going through since last year. We began in teaching and learning, looking at seven different programs for math. And we analyzed the programs, looking at the programs data and their standards and how they match the Minnesota standards. We also looked at results from other districts. And as a teaching and learning team, we narrowed it down to three programs. We brought the three programs to our leadership team and world's best workforce. And together, we listened to the presentations again and brought it down to two programs that we were interested in for K-5. After looking at the two, our teachers and world's best workforce members narrowed it down to one to pilot, which was Math in Focus. So we piloted the materials for two months in October and November of the school year in every grade level in all three schools. And after we brought the team back together, the team looked at the data from before and after, we discussed the strengths and the concerns of the program, and we determined as a team that the rigor of the curriculum and the research-based strategies that were given were a very good fit for Columbia Heights. We also were able to talk to other schools and districts that had Math in Focus, as well as visit another district. So that was really helpful as a team to see Math in Focus in action in another school district. So our team came back together and decided to bring the recommendation forward to the School Board that we look at Math in Focus for implementation in the 2016, 2017 school year.
Along with curriculum and materials, we also need to, of course, provide professional development to our staff. And so here we have a proposed, um, outline for our professional development plan for this new math curriculum. So as you can see, there would be summer opportunities, um, multiple summer opportunities for, um, training and then, of course, during Welcome Back Week. Um, we want to make sure that we're, um, not simply providing one training for teachers and then saying, okay, go teach it, but ongoing throughout the school year. So then, again, later in the fall, we would provide another training, again in the winter, and then as part of the teaching and learning team, we can go in, um, throughout the school year, um, to support, support teachers and check in teachers as, as they go along with implementing a, a new math curriculum. So what are the expected expenditures for such a curriculum, right? For looking at K through five in all three elementary schools? So, one of my main goals is to ensure that we have a really great value for, um, for our funding and for our expenditures here in our district. And so we, um, worked closely with, um, and I explored all avenues in terms of finding savings and discounts and, um, any other types of savings that we could get, um, from the, from the publishing company. Um, so here you can see, um, the breakdown of what the materials themselves would cost. Now the materials include online and technology subscriptions, along with printed materials, and then, of course, professional development. Um, we were pretty diligent in trying to get some discounts, as you can see. So what does this, this type of an expenditure mean for our district? Who will benefit? So we're looking at over 72 classroom, or 72 classrooms, 90 teachers, and over 1,500 students in grades K through five. So that's really, um, where the money would go towards. So today we wanted to provide you with some information about the process and the selection. Um, and next week we'll bring forward the action item, um, for the recommendation to adopt Math in Focus curriculum, um, that would be implemented in K through five classrooms in fall of 2016. So if there are any questions?
I have one quick question. Can you just talk about why, um, why it is that you, as a team, decided that this was gonna be a good fit for Columbia Heights? What was it about Math in Focus that sits well with you guys?
We currently have everyday mathematics, which I think Superintendent Kelly mentioned was 15 years.
1998. We were going strong.
And that curriculum is a spiral curriculum. So students will have a topic at the beginning of fifth grade, in the middle of fifth grade, later on in fifth grade. They don't master a topic. They're hit many different times. And we've noticed as we look at the data, there are students who are struggling with that. That it's hard, especially with mobility or moving in and out, different breaks, that if they're not able to spend enough time on a topic, they struggle with later on mastering it. So one piece we really looked at with our teachers and looking at the data was to find a program that would allow students to master the mathematics topics in many different ways. So this one really brings in the pictorial, the abstract, and the concrete pieces because many topics are difficult in math. So really giving students an opportunity to experience math in different ways until they master the topic.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
So, it sounds like this, this curriculum can be personalized, um, to students. I know we've focused on that in Columbia Academy. Is that true? Or are we able to personalize it to students' needs?
So, absolutely. We, um, because a lot of the curriculum comes with online pieces and our teachers can collaborate at the different grade levels because they have common, um, instructional math periods. Um, if there are students who either need a second dose or who need some time for acceleration, we're able to do that with this curriculum.
Okay, great. Is there a way we could see the curriculum if people are interested? Where would we go for that?
Right upstairs. Our whole counter is filled with it. All three schools actually have in kindergarten through fifth grade, there's at least one teacher in every one of those buildings that has the curriculum. So every kindergarten classroom. And then we also have a copy upstairs in teaching and learning.
Okay, great.
So you could certainly contact me.
Just, I was doing math when you were talking. Um, when you talked about the overall savings, where is that coming from? What, if you, if you mentioned it, I apologize for having not heard it, but where's the difference coming from?
Are you answering this? Yes. The savings came from working with a publisher and really looking at the different pieces that we needed and also in terms of timing, in terms of when we get the materials and use it. So it's through working with a publisher and the needs that we have.
We always like to see savings and if it's a good program to boot, then that's, nice job. Okay. Any other questions?
Is, is there a computer, um, technology element to this as well? So that students can get practice using technology?
Part of the cost is, um, both online subscriptions and online material, access to online materials, as well as the print materials.
Okay.
And another piece for this was, uh, World's Best Workforce Committee member really pushed on having parents have access to that or family members. So there's videos also that families can access, so they can see what the kids are learning in school and be able to support them at home.
Fantastic.
Good.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to our action items. First up is the discontinuance of programs and position resolution.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Director Holmgren and I were back in, I think it was December 15th here with the information item regarding this resolution. It is the resolution for discontinuance of programs and positions for 2016 and 2017. It's an annual resolution that we bring forward to the board each school year. Nothing's changed from last year and it just has administration start looking at efficiencies and economies as we go into the next school year. So tonight we're seeking approval for this resolution.
Okay. If I get a motion in a sec, second.
Second.
Laura, I'll read the resolution and account discussion. Um, whereas there may be a reduction in school finances, and, oh, I'll start at the top. Resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. Whereas there may be a reduction in school finances and, whereas this reduction in expenditures in school finances may include discontinuance of positions and discontinuance or curtailment of programs and, whereas a determination must be made as to which teachers' contracts and programs must be terminated and not renewed and with which teachers may be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits and affecting discontinuance of positions and programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 Columbia Heights hereby directs the Superintendent of Schools and Administration to consider the discontinuance of programs or positions to effectuate economies and efficiencies in the school district and reduce expenditures as necessary. And as a result of a reduction in school finances, make recommendations to the School Board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of positions, or curtailment of positions. Um, the motion was read by Member Landwehr, seconded by Member Lewis. Discussion.
I guess just to say that this, like Director Bennett said, we usually, we bring this, uh, every year. So, for, for me, it's a continuing resolution. We should always be looking for efficiencies and, um, but this sort of, uh, formalizes it, so, um, and this, this does, this is the same resolution that we do see every year.
At this time every year.
Yes.
Anyone else?
I just have a further comment and, um, and this resolution has to be put into place so that, um, that, um, planning can be done for the next year with regards to, um, to staffing and so forth. And this has to be legally in place to do so.
Okay. Nothing else? Roll call please, Todd.
Uh, Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Landwehr, aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the pay equity report. Lindsay?
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Again, I was here in December to give you some information, some background information on the pay equity report. Um, before I begin, again, our mission to create worlds of opportunity for every learner. And as we look at our core values tonight, we focus on the core value of excellence. So again, the purpose of this report, it is a state mandated report. Um, it looks at salary information on employees to assure that the institution is not discriminating against female employees and their compensation practices. Um, we have to file a pay equity report, um, this school year by January 31st, 2016. This is in accordance with the State of Minnesota Local Government Pay Equity Act. Um, we file the report every three years. The last report was filed in January of 2013. And every public sector does file this report, just everybody's on a different schedule. So we were lucky enough this year to have it be our turn to submit the report. Um, and previous years, that's same with this year. I worked with Springstead Incorporated, which we work with for our job descriptions also to help, um, there's a whole complex database you have to put all this information into and so they work closely with us to get that information in there. So the State of Minnesota looks at four tests, the completeness and accuracy test, statistical analysis test, salary range test, and the exceptional services pay test. And for the completeness and accuracy test, that just looks, we have to submit the report by January 31st. Even if we're not in compliance with any of the other tests, we have to submit the report. If we don't submit the report, we just brought a compliance rate away, so there's no way to fix it. The first, or the second test is the statistical analysis test and that compares salary data to determine if males and females are paid the same for comparable work, which we are in compliance with this test. The two that we're currently not in compliance with is the salary range test, which again, back in 2013, we ran into the same issue, is we're a female-dominated organization and so our teaching, it's 17 steps to maximum and it really throws off the numbers, cause they're female-dominated job classes that they look at. But within those job classes, males and females are paid the same depending on their education and experience. So back in 2013, what we did is we submitted the report, they come back and it's usually not till June or July, and we asked for reconsideration and they did grant our reconsideration, understand that we are a female-dominated workforce. So that's, again, the plan for this year is to, again, submit it that way. Um, and also on top of it too, it's looking at information as of December 31st, so sometimes in June, staffing changes, so that might affect the numbers too. And the second test that we do not, are non-compliance with right now is, um, exceptional services pay, so those classes receiving longevity or performance pay. And this, again, I didn't create the rules, but, um, they look at those that actually are receiving the longevity. So some of our job classifications, such as clerical, are eligible to receive longevity, they just haven't been here long enough to receive it and that doesn't count. They actually have to be receiving the payment as of December 31st. Whereas our custodial unit, which is mostly males, have been here long enough, so they are actually receiving the payment by December 31st. So it's one of those, they will get it eventually, they just don't have the years of service right now and the report doesn't look at if you are eligible for it, they look at if you're actually receiving the payment as of that date. So I think we could make that claim too when we do, if we do file reconsideration or maybe at the point in June or July, we might be in compliance at that point too. So the next steps, again, we have to file the report by January 31st, even though we're non-compliant with the two of the tests, um, we'll receive a notice of non-compliance, which again, we had back in January of 2013. And usually we get this in June or July, so it takes them a couple of months to give us this notice of non-compliance. And then we have a request to reconsider or to file a new report and I would work closely with, um, Springstead. And usually, we get this in June or July, so it takes them a couple of months to give us this notice of noncompliance. And then we have requests to reconsider or to file a new report. And I would work closely with Springstead to see what they think our best option would be at that time. So tonight, I'm here for board approval of the Pay Equity Report as presented. And again, we have to have it submitted by January 31st. So, any questions?
Start with, get it on the table, and then we could have a discussion on questions, if that's okay. So if I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura, second by Ted. Discussion or questions? Ted, did you have something?
I was just wondering, is there actually a Pay Equity Report written out? I didn't see it in our board packet.
It's the cover sheet that has all the information on it, so that's what's...
Is considered the report?
That's what they will submit, yeah.
Okay.
What are the consequences? I mean, I know the third step, the reconsideration, and that worked last time, but what are consequences if they don't accept a reconsideration on something like that? I mean, is there a penalty or...
There's a bigger penalty right now if we don't file a report. That'll be the first thing, and I think they can withhold state aid and everything. But what, if they don't take the reconsideration, then we have to file a new report, so we might have to look at combining some job classes. Staffing might change at that time, so we could be in compliance in some of those areas too. It's just a snapshot at one point in time that they look at. So sometimes by the end of the year, things change. But last time, we submitted a reconsideration and they accepted it right away.
You may have mentioned, I don't recall, but for the fourth step, were we out of compliance last year as well?
We weren't the last time, but we just put in longevity to the custodial, and it wasn't in effect at that time. It came in the end of that school year. So again, like I said, it's not if they are eligible to receive it at one point in time. It's if they're receiving it at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Does the state take into consideration that this is not intentional? That we're out of compliance?
I think they do, because last time when we filed the reconsideration, like I said, they were quick to approve it. So I'm sure they understand with the female-dominated workforce that we have, and we're not, like I said, within the teacher unit, we're not discriminating against males or females within that unit. They all have the same 17 steps to maximum. So they look at that too, and then they realize. And we'll say too, that we, you know, certain classes are eligible for the longevity. They just aren't receiving it at this time.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Motion carries. Thanks, Lindsay. Next is board topics. Anyone have anything for board topics? Okay. Hearing none, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:52. Thanks, everybody.